I would like to call the April 25, 2022 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. We are going to start with invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please stand?
Lord, thank you for this opportunity for our community members to come forward and speak with our commission this evening. We appreciate all the activity that we're having, and we hope that you guide us through the future of our community. In your name, amen.
You please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready to begin?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Could we have a roll call?
Commissioner Rutherford?
Here.
Commissioner King?
Here.
Commissioner Roberts? Commissioner Griffiths?
Yes.
Commissioner Laney? Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Surtur.
My understanding is we're going to approve the minutes from the 11th and the 25th at the May meeting?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Fernando, are there, Mr. Gonzalez, are there any announcements that you'd like to make?
Hello, my name is Larry Rankin. I am the vice chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I will be presiding over the commission's deliberations on hearing items this evening. The Planning and Zoning Commission sits as an advisory capacity to the town council and reviews planning and zoning issues and forwards recommendations regarding these important issues to the council. Hope I'm getting this. The main agenda item this evening is a public hearing item. It is GPA 21-001, the second public hearing discussion, consideration, and possible action to make recommendation to the town council regarding the draft Town of Prescott Valley General Plan 2035. Wayne Ballmer will be representing staff.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, and thank you all for coming to the second meeting. It's been a long process, but let's go through... Which way do I click?
Just anywhere. Is it turned on?
Turned on. Just for that. There we go. There we go. Okay, just some background. On the right is the town's current 2025 general plan. State law requires every community to have a general plan and update them every 10 years. And ours was adopted in 2013, and the council wants to have it on the ballot for this fall so we can comply with that state timeline. So, the state has a process that's set up to do this, so that it's been a longer process, and it has all of these steps that we're required to have. This is a slide of what we looked at last summer, when the commission saw it, and the council approved, all those steps in the process. And that was what we approved. You can see we're down here on April 11th, but we moved back one to April 25th. The town council presentation will be on May 12th. But this is actually what we did. You can see all the dates. You might fondly recall all those meetings back in September and October and November and December, when we were looking at parts of it and then the whole draft, and then we send it out for people to look at. You saw the updated draft that you're meeting on the 11th, and now you have the updated draft for some action this afternoon. One thing I should say about the draft that you have, we're still doing some corrections on the editing. We found a few more things we want to check and do, and so we've hired actually a professional proofreader to go through and help us with that. So, the one you have this afternoon, if you find some things in it, we probably have already addressed them, hopefully, but it's still sort of a work in progress, and those changes would be made before it goes to the town council. So, the goals of the new plan that the council gave us last summer were to make it shorter, make it easier to read, not so much text, not so many tables, but more pictures and graphics, focus more on goals, not so much on data and things, but what is it that the council might do in the next 10 years? What are the goals? What are the steps, so that the council knows how to move forward in the directions that they want? So, they wanted to retain the existing goals and policies, but add new ones where we thought they would be needed. The council thought they would be needed, and we have, and we'll go through a little bit. This is the cover of the draft plan that you have. You can see all the chapters there on the right. Each one of those is a requirement from the state of Arizona, so that we touch on certain elements, land use, circulation, implementation, growth, they're all covered, and you'll have them all in your document. But this year, they're more color-coded. You see, once you get to the red pages, well, that's probably, you know, implementation. The green is the appendix. So, we're trying to do that as well. So, some of the changes from the last plan to this plan, where we've incorporated responses we received from the state land department, since they're a very large property owner in our area, we added an appendix for the two surveys that we did. One was called 20 Questions. It was on our website, and the other was the Top Five Things, we called it. What are the top five things you like about Prescott Valley, or the top things you'd like to see changed? We updated the land use map, because we've had changes since then. We've updated the circulation map to show more planned streets, streets that were done, new streets named, and new areas where streets will go in the future. We updated our street cross-sections. That's a very important thing, is how wide should streets be in the future, how major arteries, minor arteries, so that people can see how wide it is going to be. Sometimes when the streets put in originally, it might be only two lanes, but it's going to go to four lanes, and we want people to know that in the future it might be expanded. We updated all of our population information, because that's changed an awful lot since we did our last general plan. And we updated our environmental chapter to include issues that were raised by the Arizona Department of Water Resources, Fifth Management Plan. We had a Fourth Management Plan. The state puts these out to provide regulation for local communities on what to do about water conservation, water use, and we've incorporated the Fifth One, which is the newest for our area. I mentioned our 20-question survey. This survey got 502 responses when it was on our website. We asked 20 questions about things that, all of which you'll see, you have the material in the back in the appendix, all of those things related to the general plan. We tried to incorporate either a goal to address, like this one, development density maintains its town and country image. People don't agree with that. They don't think it does. So, we looked at some things and add some goals and policies to try to address that. The second one we did was Top Five Things. What would you like to... What do you like about Prescott Valley? Or what would you like to change? And the ones on the left are the things that people like best, the ones on the right are things they'd like to change. And again, we've included those as goals and policies in the various sections, either Parks and Recreation, Transportation, Land Use, where they would fall into it. But you can see on the left, people like it's family-friendly, it's a small town, they like the open space, they like some of the new subdivisions, like the event center, the parks, that we've got libraries, healthcare. But on the other side, people like more sidewalks, trails, fewer culverts, balanced growth, more diversity, and those are things that the council can look at when they do their five-year capital improvement program. If you provide more sidewalks, you have to decide where to provide the sidewalks, how much are you going to spend on sidewalks, and how do you coordinate those together? So, those would be things the council can look at over several years to say, how would we do more bike trails? How would we do more sidewalks? How would we do more park improvements? So, those are all in there as you look at those new goals. And then we asked them, how would you describe Prescott Valley today? And you can see the ones on the left are the positive ones, people friendly, caring, convenient, business-friendly, thriving, peaceful, safe, right-sized. And the ones on the right are the ones they're not so pleased with at the moment. Sprawling, growing too fast, poorly planned, developer-driven, haphazard. I like that one, Prescott envy. I'm not exactly sure what that one is, but it came up, so, you know... But if you look at those, I think it shows a real positive direction that people have for Prescott Valley for the future. Then we asked them, what three words would you describe Prescott Valley 10 years from now? So, again, the council could say, what is it we want to keep of what we have now, and what is it we want to change, so that 10 years from now, people are still proud to live in Prescott Valley, and maybe they're more satisfied with it 10 years from now than they are now? And you can see some of the things, they're there. They want to be friendly, diverse, maintain, sustainable, hiking trails, forward-thinking, you know, delightful, vibrant, you know, livable, positive. All of those are really positive things. Your citizens are generally pleased with the community and like to see it, and they see a positive future for the community, and that's where this general plan and the council's use of it will come into play, to say, how do we achieve those things while keep them 10 years from now? So, some of the new goals that we've added, and you have them in the book, this book is about 50 pages shorter than the other one, because we've taken out a lot of the dry details, and you'll see there's more pictures and more goals. But we included some for community design and appearance. That seemed to be a reoccurring theme with the council as well, that we could do more to improve the appearance of the streetscapes, we could do more to improve the appearance of buildings, so that as you drive into the community, you get a positive impression of what Prescott Valley is and what it can do for you. We added goals on environmental awareness. That was an area we thought could be emphasized, so we have green building construction, water conservation programs. Environmental sensitivity is a key thing, not only now, but into the future. And then, more attractive buildings, housing choices, more varied housing choices, that was an issue that people thought, is, ought to be broader range of the kind of housing that's available to attract different kinds of families, the sizes of families, incomes of families, so that's something we will work at. Compatibility between residential uses and non-residential came up, and you see it in the surveys, several times, that people feel that, you know, they're kind of butting up once at each other, and you could do more with transitions, landscaping, setbacks, screening, those kinds of things. So, those are in there as well. Housing discrimination surprisingly came up three or four times, where people felt that that personally was an issue for them, and so we wanted to add something, and you have that in this one, about the town's policy is nondiscrimination in housing, real clear, and it's right in there. And then, the town's development regulations, you know, they were adopted, actually, when the town was first incorporated. The first ones were based on Yavapai County's ordinance, and then they just migrated them over to the town. They've changed it since then, but it's still dated, and it needs to be updated. Street maintenance and level of service is an issue throughout communities, but we have quite a few streets that were originally dirt, and now they were paved, but they could be repaving or additional work because of the quality of them. And some of our streets are carrying more traffic than they were designed for, and that's what they call level of service. You know, A is great, no slowdowns, F means it's bottlenecked most of the day. Most of ours are B and C, but we do have some that aren't. And for instance, Robert Road carries a lot more traffic. You have driveways that come out into the road, you have different things that you wouldn't normally have on a busy traffic street like that, but we do. And then, reinvestment areas, you know, some areas in town are 40 years old, and they weren't that attractively developed when they first developed, and now they're showing their age, yet most people drive down 89A and think that's Prescott Valley, what you see from the highway, and that's not true, but people have that perception because of how it looks along the highway. So, the council is thinking, how can we focus on upgrading that appearance, upgrading those buildings, so that people have a more positive image when they drive through the community, and get them to stop rather than drive onto Prescott? I mentioned water conservation. The town is concerned about that. You know, the town has what's called a progressive water rate system for your water rate. It starts out low if you don't use much water, and it gets increasingly higher the more water you use. The town encourages, in fact, requires low-flow facilities in your home, working on xeriscaping. In fact, on the right is actually the low-water-use plants that are recommended for the Prescott Active Management Area. We have quite a few plants that people like to install that are actually quite water-intensive, and we'd like to encourage people to use native plants, so it looks first more native and also reduce water consumption. And we have those brochures that you can get on water-wise and how to improve water use in the community. And actually, the town's per capita water use has been going down for several years as these changes are being made. Whoops. This was a map that we looked at last time on land use. You'll see we added some areas where you wanted to show them as being developed, low-density areas down there in the lower right and then upper left, to show that those are single-family residential areas. We used that PAD system that was used before, and you'll notice in the book, they have an identity and a character to say, this is generally what we're expecting to see develop in those PADs. Now, the direction from the council was not to change really any of the colors on the map, as far as changing land uses from one land use to another, because the council wanted to say, this is what we have now, and if you want to change, there's a process to come in and do that, but we want to look at them individually rather than making a whole lot of them as part of this process. So, we have them. So, the next steps are the discussion tonight. We have citizens, the audience, who want to speak, and hopefully, we can, you know, have them all speak, and the vice chair can give everybody time, since it's a small group. But the staff's recommendation to you this evening is to approve the plan before you, as modified, as far as typographical and grammatical errors that might be made between now and then, and it would come to the council then on May 12th. They have an item on their agenda, or will have, it's Resolution Number 22, 2022, 2250, and that would be the resolution, and you have a draft copy of it. It doesn't have the number on the top. It's a council will be looking at in May, as far as whether or not to move it forward, because as I mentioned, we need to get it to the Yavapai Election Board by... Fatima has the date, but I think it is the 23rd of May in order to get time for them to get it on the ballot, print the ballot, and get it onto the November election. So, with that, one other thing I wanted to touch on was the state land again. We talked about that a little bit. The state really wanted us to be clear on where the state land is, because so many people ask about, why isn't that developed across the street? Or when is that going to develop across the street? Or why aren't they doing something across the street? Well, many times across the street is state land, and so that's why this was added. So, this is the resolution number, and you can see what's described there, but that is what we'd be asking the council to adopt when it comes before them in May. So, with that, if you have any questions, I'd be pleased to answer them, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ballmer. Are there any questions of Mr. Ballmer by the commission?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I don't have any specific questions, Mr. Ballmer. I do have generalization of comments. I don't know if you want to take some of those now, or if you would like to hear from our audience who's with us this evening. What would you like to do, Mr. Vice Chair?
Well, at this point, we're just talking about questions that the commission has towards Mr. Ballmer.
Because we can do them now, or I can speak to you after the meeting, whichever is more convenient.
No, I feel some of them are important enough to be on record.
Oh, okay.
So, there.
Okay. Now's the time.
Perfect. So, I read my book from page one to page 101. There are many instances in the general plan, Mr. Ballmer, where we call out Prescott Valley, we call out the town, and we call out the town of Prescott Valley. I think it's critically important that we give ourselves the same moniker all the way through the general plan.
Yes. What happened on that is different people wrote different parts of it, and they had it different ways, and that's one of the things we're correcting.
Perfect, because that is critically important to this book. My next question, in the general plan, we use the word reinvestment and revitalization, exchanges, crossovers in many different instances, and I feel that those two words, that we should use the same one, so if you don't mind taking a look at all of that for me.
Sure, we're glad to.
I am and have been opposed to putting the surveys in the general plan. Tonight, you made a comment that I've not ever heard before, where you took some of the survey questions and answers, and you moved those forward into goals and policies in the general plan. I think that's exceptionally brilliant. However, how would we know in looking at this general plan where those survey questions were implemented? I think it would be valuable to have some sort of key or tool that this general plan element came out of the surveys.
Well, sometimes they were generalized, like we had several on traffic. What do you think about traffic volume, adequacy of streets, need for street improvements, those sorts of things? We would group those together generally and say, this is a pattern that people are saying in the survey, and so we will add a goal on, you know, enhancing street improvements, or adding culverts, or adding additional sidewalks, so that those are in there, so that the council can see them.
But how... Sorry. How would we know that they were implemented because of great suggestions and comments from our citizens? I think that's important.
I think we'd have to think about how best to do that, because generally, the council looks at the whole document and says, this is our plan for the future.
Right.
Regardless of where the ideas came from, if they get into the book, and the council approves the book, then it's their book to move forward, to do what they like.
Okay, I'm not keen on that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Commissioner King?
None for me at this time.
Commissioner Rutherford? Do you have any questions?
No, I'm having a hearing problem without our usual sound system, and I'm getting part of what's said. I'm following in the document, so I know the gist, and I did get Sandy's, but I haven't gotten a lot of...
Okay.
Wayne has that, so... If you're speaking to me, speak to me, please.
Commissioner Griffith, one more?
Yes, one more. Thank you, Vice Chair. Mr. Ballmer, in the Chapter 14, the permits and the numbers that are in the general plan, we have 2021 numbers, and I would like for those to be implemented. We've only stopped at 2020.
Yeah, we use the census numbers.
No, these are permit numbers.
Yeah.
But those are not census numbers. These are actual permit numbers from the town.
Okay.
So, if we could include that, please.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm out of questions.
Mr. Ballmer, I have just one thing. It's really not a question. I think for the audience here, I'd like them to understand better the timeframe that we, and you and staff, have been working on this project, when it started, and now as we come down to the final, the importance of moving it on so that we can vote on it on... in November.
Sure. Yes, this has been quite a compressed process compared with many others. Back in last June was when Eric Fitzher, who was the planner at that time, brought to you a timetable for update of the plan. Generally, a plan like this takes a year or two to do. They do lots of neighborhood meetings, they do outreach, like our surveys, they do other kinds of things, but the town was in a bind because of staff turnover and things changing within the administration. And they know they have to get it on the agenda for the election in November, otherwise they will be in violation of the state's requirements. So, they asked me to work with staff to come up with a revised plan. So, we wrote it, and as you recall, we did it, I started in September. We went through it. You got a part of it, the first few chapters in October, you got the next group of chapters in November, and you got a whole document in December. So, after that, we are required to send it out to various agencies for, give them 60 days to review it and make their comments, and we sent it out to 22 different agencies, and that ended the end of February, so we can make their changes, and most of them came from the state land department, so we can get it to you in April, the first meeting in April. Now, in there, you know, we have to get it printed and all those other things, and your legal advertising has to be done, so we need to know it's ready by the time we put your legal advertising out, so it backs the dates up a little bit. So, we didn't have a whole lot of time there at the time we did the 60-day review comment period. And that's why we've taken it pretty quickly to get from then till now. The challenge now with the council is that in order to get it on the ballot, the Yavapai County Election Department wants 180 days, and so backing that up, as far as getting it printed after the council does it, getting it transferred over, the town clerk has to do the paperwork to request it be put on the ballot, and so that's how we got to the May 12th meeting, because the council meets, unless they were going to have a special meeting just for this, we tried to put it on their calendar along, as a regular item on an agenda, so they don't have to have a second special meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chairman? Hi, Mr. Ballmer. How are you doing? Good to see you tonight. I do have a couple of questions, now that we've been speaking. I know I said no in the beginning, but I tend to say no and then change my mind, so... I would like to just mention briefly that although you said that this timing was compressed, we've also said in many of these other meetings that we have had a total of 956 comments from our residents that have contributed to this plan as it stands now, with respect to the questions that you had earlier about where within the surveys are the goals in being implemented. I think that, from my perspective, because the communication is coming from the surveys, which is coming from our constituents, I think it's good to implement that in the plan. I would like it to be known that this plan is a general plan, and it says with specificity within this document here that we read, that they prefer it to be presented to our citizens as a general plan to get communication from our citizens. So, that 956 comments is, I think, that is, you know, precedent that we've seen right from previously before. I'd also like it to be known that Mr. Ballmer is, and has been doing this for a very, very long time, and has seen many of these plans go through, and has very much...
Not a very, very long... Just a very time, not...
Okay, well, I've met with him on separate occasions, and he's done an excellent job, and we've moved forward. So, my question, that was a little bit of a long-winded way to my question, but last meeting, we spoke about the 22 agencies that this plan has been submitted to. So, this plan goes to 22 other agencies to review it and look at it. It was my understanding that we received comments back from one agency. Have we received any comments back from alternative agencies aside from that one?
At this point, we have not, but in follow-up to your direction at the last meeting, I have mailed copies, the electronic copy of the book that you have, to all of the planning directors in our area. So, we sent it to Dewey-Humboldt, Chino Valley, Prescott, the Yavapai County Metropolitan Planning Organization, and the county, and asked them for input before. And it's also to let them know it's coming to the council, and so if they get any questions, they have it available. But I'm waiting for more comments back from them, because they're our next-door neighbors.
Okay, so to date, though, we have received comments from one?
We have not.
Okay.
No. And one thing about that, thank you for mentioning the 956. I was really surprised by that, because normally, when you do a general plan, you do neighborhood meetings... you do neighborhood meetings around. And you're lucky if you get 10 or 15 people to come, and you go through the process, and you go to another meeting, you get 10 or 15. But this year, because of the time constraint and COVID, we weren't able to do meetings. We talked about doing meetings, and some people wouldn't come if you made them wear a mask. Other people wouldn't come if you didn't. And then we were concerned about Town of Prescott Valley being seen as a super-spreader, or some negative things that could come out of that. And so that's why we decided to do the surveys. And I think many people in the future will be doing surveys, because how difficult would it be to get 956 people to come to a meeting? So, and the way the surveys are set up, you know, they aren't what they call stratified random sample. You aren't saying this many people over 65, and this many people who have a family, and this many people. You know, anybody could reply, but you can only reply once, the way the survey is set up. You can't do it multiple times. And the idea was to get as many impressions from as many people as possible, knowing we weren't going to be able to go down and say, well, the 65-year-olds think this about trails. But what do our citizens think? Generally, if we went to ask them in a safe way, and people just come in, what would they say? And that's kind of how we got it. And that's why we included some of them in the general plan.
Thank you.
I would like to thank Mr. Ballmer and the staff that you've been working with at the Town of Prescott Valley has been an awful lot of work in a time restraint. And I appreciate that. We thank you. I'd also like to thank the three commissioners that were, that are here with me this evening. As we're all individuals, but I find that some of us are more detail-oriented than others. And these three are the detail-oriented portion of our staff. So I'm glad that they're here, and I appreciate what they've done so far.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. One thing I'd like to add, even though I'm standing here tonight, this was a team effort. This couldn't have been done without Joe Scott. He's a planner, does a lot of the graphics and the maps and the tables, great guy on computers. But I'd like to thank Joe for all of his help on this. Otherwise, it would have been an insurmountable task almost, so.
Thank you again. At this point, we'd like to, I'd like to open it up to the people here to make any comments that they'd like. We would like you to come up to, hopefully, one at a time, but up to the microphone. And be sure to speak into the microphone plainly and give your name and your address first. That would really be appreciated. We are going to limit your feedback to five minutes per person. So, and we hope that there's not a lot of repetitive scenarios tonight. So anyone that would like to speak, the microphone is yours.
Hi, my name's Paula McCann. I'm a resident and homeowner in Stone Ridge for the last nine years. And I have a question. Was this master plan, did you evaluate any successful communities that are, say, older and more developed than Prescott? As a scenario as to...
Please talk to the commission.
Oh, okay.
Can you spell your name for us? I'm sorry.
It's Paula McCann, M-C-C-A-N-N.
Got it.
So the question is, have you looked at other well-developed cities, similar size, that are functioning really well? And use any cities as models as to how we create our master plan? Since there are some models out there. And as an example, I lived in Boulder, Colorado, which is a beautifully designed community. And they did an excellent job of keeping open space, public lands, trails, making it really just a wonderful community. And if that's not in the plan, that will go by the wayside. So I was just wondering if you had any plans that you compared it to.
Have you read the plan?
I've attempted to read it and probably got spaced out about the 30 pages on my iPhone. I'm familiar with some of the committee things in terms of, I'm concerned about zoning changes, even though there's a plan. And I see how easily zoning changes are made, so that suddenly parks that were once in a master plan are eliminated. Where I see that public land, example in Stone Ridge, is now going to be single-family homes. So I know that master plans can change and general plans can change. But I'm interested in maintaining our open space, our public lands, our parks. I think that the developers, I welcome them to do the development. However, I think there should be something in their contracts that they're also partly responsible for the infrastructure. Because this random growth, without our infrastructure being taken care of, is going to be a major problem. And I'm wondering also about height restrictions on buildings. That became a big issue in Boulder. When suddenly the building's limited, okay, now we're going to go up. So I wonder if there's any height restrictions, and also pad restrictions in terms of how much fill's brought into different areas and where the new housing's developed. And the aesthetic design is a concern that I have. It's a great little town, and I'd like to let it grow in a really well-planned way. Thank you.
My name is Sandy Cordova. I'm a resident of Prescott Valley. And I want to thank all those who did commit and contribute and coordinated to the Town of Prescott Valley general plan. There's a couple of words that really come up to me while reading through the plan. And they're conservation and sustainability. And I'm going to comment on those two items. And what is conservation? Well, to me, is prevention of a wasteful use of a resource. Conservation is a moral responsibility for all of us and a philosophy that protects our natural resources. And sustainability, that means meeting our own needs without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. We need economic resources available to citizens. And in your section, the growth section of the plan, you say you want to promote managed growth. And the part of it that I really pulled out from that was conserve natural resources. And so how are you going to, how would we be able to conserve our water, a natural resource, while providing enough water to serve citizens? What, and I know this is only a guide, but I'd like to know what strategic action can be taken to ensure water security and protection, protecting our environment? I'd like to really believe that there is a water management policy that our town management can communicate to us as citizens. And that homes can only be built when there's continued access to water. So promoting the sustainable, attractive, and diverse housing options in neighborhoods is really important. But you know what I was missing out of that statement? Affordable housing. And it's housing that a household can pay for while still being able to meet their necessities, like food and transportation and health care. I know two young men who are working at Sprouts. And they're unable to afford rent or buy a home. Their dream is to buy a home. And how could they possibly afford to buy that home or even to rent on their own when there isn't anything available within their income? So what I would like to see is a team cooperation between the town management and the citizens. And what I propose is that there would be a diverse volunteer citizens team to assist in implementing the general plan as a viable, sustainable, and successful plan for now and the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, you've been up a couple of times. I think it's your turn.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Carl Shadell. I'm a homeowner here in Prescott Valley. And...
Could you repeat your name a little bit slower so that she can get it for you?
Actually, you could spell your last name.
Want me to spell it? S-H-A, D-Laken David, L-E.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, would you ask everyone to speak directly into the microphone? There's not much amplification, and I'm probably not the only one having trouble hearing.
I'll pretend like I'm on American Idol here. Okay, I know that, a couple of questions. First of all, I know that I was a participant in the survey. And obviously, the plan was in draft form, was already prepared when the survey came out. But I was just curious how much attention was paid to the survey. I know, Mr. King, talk about this a little bit. But when I looked at some of the questions, I'll just go back, one of was on the board earlier, and that was question number one, regarding the pattern of development intensity and design features of Prescott Valley. Have we maintained that town and country image? 65% of the respondents said no. 30% of the respondents said yes. And the other concern that I have, and one of the primary concerns, sounds like, is the issue of water. We just, this young lady just talked about that. And I think we all know about the news. We all know what the situation is. We know about Lake Mead. We know about, we know about Lake Powell and the condition of the Colorado River. Now, we're not on cap, I understand that. But in some of my research, and we are losing acre feet every year. We are having, we have not reached anywhere near the, what's the name of that?
Safe U.
Anyway, the aquifers are going down, let's say it that way. And what, how that factors in to this plan? I just, if we're already at that level, then what, when we add additional units, which we're talking a considerable number of housing units in the next 10 years or so, then what effect is that going to have on our water supply? I suspect that that's going to be an issue. In fact, it comes up later in the survey. It says, it's question number 10. Prescott Valley is on the right track to satisfy current and future water demands through development and sustainable renewable water. Well, a very strong, strongly disagree is a little over 30%. But once again, the total numbers are, the people who disagree with that comment, with that question, are 61%. And those that agree with it are about 25%. So it's obvious that other people are aware of this. So I just, my concern, and obviously the concern of several other residents, is where the water's going to come from. In the plan, there's even comments, when we talk about water, that it is not going to have sufficient, we are not going to have sufficient water to sustain the population growth that this would attribute, I mean, that would be incoming. And that we even, it's even mentioned in there that we have to talk about building a water canal or a water transport from a well someplace out in Pauldon, north of Pauldon. So that is another indication that our resources are being depleted. And my concern is, what do we do about that? If this plan is implemented, how do we prevent that? Thank you.
Good evening. Isabel Ceredes. That's spelled C-E-R-E-C-E-D-E-S. I'm a 13-year resident of Viewpoint. Thank you for hearing us tonight. I sent in a five-page outline of some of the changes that I'd like to see within the general plan. I'll try to hit on some of those. I know there's not enough time to go over everything. I also went over the survey, and using my analytical skills, I looked at the answers to the 20 questions, and I kind of excluded neither agree or disagree. Because people typically, if they don't know the answer, or they don't know what's going on, they'll just hit that. So in excluding that, I saw that 71% of the people disagree that Prescott Valley is on the right track to satisfy current and future water demands through development of sustainable and renewable water. 83% agreed that public resources must be diverted to bike paths and pedestrian facilities. And 68% agreed that pattern of development intensity has maintained the town and country image. 68% disagreed, and another 68% disagreed that new development is comparable with surrounding land uses, circulation networks, and public facilities. Seeing that, the overall, to me, that's very overwhelming. And that kind of tells me that the 2025 plan had a lot of these issues in there. And I know that there's some new items that have been added. But it just seems to me as though it's not working. The way we are operating the town now is not working very well, in my opinion. And I got to thinking about that, and thinking about, well, why isn't it working well? And one of the things I thought of is that currently, Prescott Valley is considered a town. And one of my items is that the town should conduct a formal study to determine if changing from a town to a city is in the best interest of current residents. Because the general plan should be all about current residents. A city can choose to split into representative council districts where residents are better represented. For example, the people out in Mingus West don't have the same issues and concerns as those people out in Stone Ridge. The people out in Viewpoint have totally different concerns from people out in Superstition Springs. So I think a study needs to be conducted to find out if that's the way the town should head. The other thing is, if the Town of Prescott Valley does become a city, it can also develop its own charter. Because right now, I've seen that a lot of things in the past policy are not followed. There's loopholes, there's different things that are happening that just don't seem appropriate. And it does appear as though the town is really growing. And I think we need to see over and above just the general plan. The City of Prescott adopted their charter in 1958. And Prescott Valley actually got incorporated, and it's been 44 years. So I think it's time to take a look at that. And then if you'll also look at the list I gave you, there's a whole bunch of stuff I am suggesting, and some of it may fall into whether or not we become a city or a charter. But there's a lot of issues. For example, land splits. A developer can have property rezoned and then turn around and sell it, and it gets divided. And the original conditions of the zoning entitlement ordinance are not followed. And I have seen in the past where we've gone, and we've discussed this with former leadership, and we were just kind of blown off. So there's a lot of room for improvement in terms of the development policies. Also, there's a problem with HOA developers who start a development, and they continue it for years and years. I know Pronghorn is seeing this, where you have the same declarant control for multiple years, 10, 15, 20 years. Out in Viewpoint North, we've been under declarant control now for over 15 years. And the five minutes is up. Okay. Okay.
So, thank you for your time tonight, and thank you for volunteering on this commission. I know you volunteer your precious time to do this, but I do hope you'll take a look at my list and consider some of those items. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Cal Nye. I've been a resident of Prescott Valley for twenty-two years, been on the Building Board of Appeals for a few years. I have interest in the subject of affordable housing. And I realize, as I thought about this more, maybe my comments aren't appropriate for here. I'm wondering, the more I read, especially in the housing element, Chapter Seven, I was seeing the words "should" frequently. For example, in planning for future housing development in the town of Prescott Valley, policies guiding growth should focus on providing various housing options for current and future residents. Particular attention should be paid to careful expansion of new affordable development. So those are good, preferable things to do, but I'm wondering, okay, so the general plan is completed at some point, and it is then turned over to city administration. Is that true? Is that the way it works? And then the town administration goes into it and decides and lays out plans for how they will carry out the, the preferences indicated in the general plan? Is that how the process works? My sense was that the more I was reading it, which is a great document, I'm impressed by how much work has gone into this thing. It's very well-written. But it seems that maybe that it's just preferences, as opposed to what is going to actually be done. That what will be done would be coming from some other decisions that are made, are made. So can you help me understand that a little?
So that you know, Mr. Nye, is that in a, in the, the public hearing scenario that we're in, it's for you to give your opinions, and then afterwards, we can get, meet staff, or you can meet with staff to give you those answers. It's not the commission, we, we're not in a feedback scenario tonight.
Okay, so the general plan goes to the town, and, and then they do with it what they do, right? I mean, this is not a requirement of what the town has to do, if I'm understanding.
Mr. Ballmer, you want to answer that for him?
Mr. Vice Chair, I'm making notes of all the speakers, and I thought at the end I would address some of the issues that they've raised, so that they leave knowing kind of what the situation is. But I can do that. I'm better equipped to do that than the board this evening, if that's your pleasure.
Thank you.
Well, I'll make general to my comments about affordable housing. I'm just interested in that subject. Several years ago, I noticed several newspaper articles were being written about the need for affordable housing in Prescott Valley, and I started collecting those articles, and I've got, I don't know, probably thirty or so articles, saying we need better attention to affordable housing. And then in August of 2019, there was a meeting at Yavapai College that addressed affordable housing. And everybody attending was concerned about affordable housing, and we don't have enough of it, and we can't find housing for teachers, and, and healthcare workers, and laborers, and so on. And so I didn't encounter anybody who was saying it was not an issue, that everybody agreed it's an issue. So then, logically, there would be some action plans come out of that, but it's a very difficult subject. And I've tried to think, well, how can I advocate for our community addressing the subject of affordable housing? Because I understand it's a very difficult thing to deal with when you're running a town, and you have to figure out, how do you do that? I don't know that I have an answer to that. I'm willing to think about it and assist in that direction in any way that I could. But my concern is that it will be spoken to, and it was mentioned in Chapter Seven, and I think there are good intentions, and everybody would like to see more good affordable housing. And I don't think anything at all will happen with that, if it's like it has been in past years, since 2003, when they had in the general plan, real details about affordable housing. It was very impressive.
And the time is up?
But it's so difficult that it's hard to address. So my question is simply, what will be done, specifically an action plan regarding affordable housing, which is advocated for in the general plan? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Members of the commission, close enough?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Ed Bull. You won't believe it, but it's B-U-L-L. Ed Bull. My address is 1850 North Central in Phoenix. I'm here representing Empire Residential. I want you to know from the outset, we're not asking you to change anything tonight in your general plan. Empire Residential is under contract to purchase about forty-one acres. We thought at one point that their goals for that property may be included in this town-wide update. In fact, at one point, we were told it had been, but then on further questioning, we understand that we need to go ahead and file a general plan amendment, which we will do, and we'll go through the staff review and the neighborhood outreach, and come back with a site-specific general plan amendment. We didn't want, though, to sit here and participate in your general plan update process, say nothing, and then have you wonder, well, why are we back here in a few months talking about a, a general plan amendment? The property that, that Empire, and Shelby Duplessis, who's the president of Empire, is here this evening as well, the, the forty-one acres that they're in Escrow to purchase is on the north side of what I call the eighty-nine A spur, and it's, it's along Viewpoint Drive, it's east of Viewpoint Drive, north and south of Pronghorn Ranch Parkway. This property was a part of a larger zoning case two or three years ago. It was withdrawn from that case. I want to emphasize that, that Empire Residential is focused on this property to try to provide some of the diversity, and some of the public street improvements, and other things that are referenced in your general plan, but we have to come back through a site-specific general plan amendment to do that. But importantly, I believe, at least in light of things that I've read from what was discussed by some neighborhood and other interests two or three years ago, Empire's plans will be one-story only. They will be about ten-point-seven units per acre overall, so it's not twenty-five or thirty-unit per acre three-story apartments. It's a rental, like, home where people have backyards, they have amenities, they have open space. It's a wonderful alternative choice for some people who choose to not be responsible for their own single-family home. They probably could afford one if they wanted to, but they choose not to, but it also weighs into some of the affordability aspects that a variety of others in your general plan speaks to as well. We will be back. We didn't want to just surprise you by wandering back in here a few months and have you wonder, why are we here? We do think it's important that the general plan process proceed as scheduled with your commission tonight, and then with the council, so they can go on the ballot. We in the interim will get our general plan amendment filed and bring it through the processes as well. We appreciate all the work that, that you've done. We've worked with your consultant on other things, I don't know, for several decades. So I know a bunch of work goes into these on the consultant level, the staff level, the commission, and the council level. We thank you for that, and we thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Thank you.
My name is David McGuire, and, my name is David McGuire. Are you hearing me?
You're going to have to bend your knees.
I wonder if I turned it off or something. There, can you hear me now? Oh, there we go. All right. Ma'am, can you hear me? Barely. My name's David McGuire. I, I live in Phoenix, and I happen to own the property that Ed was just speaking about. I'm also a land planner, have been my entire life. And we did write a letter at the beginning of this general plan process to staff, and Fernando was nice enough to respond quickly and say that they were not going to make land use plan changes in this iteration, which I think is disappointing. We understand, though, the process needs to go forward. I just want to say that during the last time when I did take this through the process, and there's two neighborhoods, one is homes are being built now. I sold two parcels there to Mandalay, and there are, I have a twenty-four acre commercial piece on the corner, and then the forty-some acres that are in Escrow with Empire. And I'm really excited about that, because at the time, we, excuse me, we did not have a builder, a quality builder, to move forward with the multifamily, so I did drop it from the case at that time. We now do with, which I think addresses the affordable housing issue. I think it addresses the neighborhood issues with not wanting multi-story homes and high density. So we're excited to come back through the process. That area, the town actually, some years ago, maybe twenty or so, already built all the infrastructure there to build higher-intensity uses, the commercial, and was anticipating multifamily. This property came in from the county as it always does when it's annexed, with a holding zone, and that holding zone is there until someone comes forward with a proposal that makes sense. Again, it's right adjacent to eighty-nine A, and it's currently zoned, and the general plan shows for large lot, single family. And not many people want to live in a large lot, an expensive home, next to a highway. So we are going to come in with a product that I think everybody will be very excited about. We are going to be able to reimburse the town for all the money they spent on providing the water and sewer and all the infrastructure there for this kind of use, and we look forward to that in the future. Thank you.
Is there any additional comment from the public?
Sorry, I'm not that tall, so I'll bring this down. Hi, my name is Shelby Duplessis, D-U-P-L-E-S-S-I-S. My address is six-six-one-seven North Scottsdale Road in Scottsdale. I'm the president of land development at Empire Companies, and I just wanted to elaborate on what Ed and Dave have said tonight. Not only will we be reimbursing those costs of the improvements that have been put in, we'll actually be working on improving and adding lanes and sidewalk and other improvements to that entire stretch of the roadway. We are not intending to phase that. We're intending to, to build that all, all at once, to open up some traffic there, and hopefully be able to help with circulation in the area, as well as starting our neighborhood outreach and working with neighbors to talk about what we're planning, and how we can work with them to make sure that we come up and actually fit into a community. Our product has always been something that we mold to the community. Every site we do is different. It depends on where the site is at. So we've worked with many different municipalities down in the valley, and have worked with Peoria on their history and agriculture, and incorporating split-rail fencing and community gardens in that site, working with Avondale for walkability, and actually turning the units outward, so it's not just walled off. We're working with Schnep Farms in Queen Creek, and actually incorporating into their farm some of the elements, and having a lot of the architecture resemble a lot of the farming architecture. So we, we pride ourselves in working with the community on what it is that makes it more palatable, and works with them in bike trails or open space, and providing an amenity, our amenity packages impressive. We have valet water, or I'm sorry, valet, valet trash and recycle pickup. We have the yoga platform. We have the community center for working or gathering. We have the resort-style pool. We have dog washing area, dog park. So a lot of things that we can actually work with to bring a different type of living to this area. So thank you so much for having us here tonight, and all that you've done today to get this onto the ballot for the general plan. Thank you.
Last call for additional comments.
Good evening. My name is Jake Wright. Can everybody hear me? Can you hear me, Mrs. Rutherford?
Not very well.
Okay, I'll talk a little bit louder.
Thank you.
My name is Jacob Wright. I live in Prescott Valley. I own a property at seventy-nine-twenty East Luce. Last name is W-R-I-G-H-T. I am a local real estate agent, and just wanted to talk a little bit more about what we've been hearing tonight about affordability. If someone wants to purchase a three-bed, two-bath home in Granville, it's going to cost them four-hundred-and-fifty to five-hundred thousand dollars. If somebody wants to buy a two-bedroom, two-bath house in one of the units in Prescott Valley, it's going to cost them between three-hundred-and-fifty and four-hundred thousand. It's my understanding that roughly five-hundred people filled out those surveys, that you guys are referencing the percentages of. Is that accurate? Five, five to six hundred people. What is the current population of Prescott Valley today? So around fifty thousand. So we got two percent or less of the residents of the town to fill out that survey. So I think that that's not a completely accurate representation of the population of Prescott Valley, if we were to be fair. I just wanted to speak a little bit about affordability of both housing, as far as resale, and rental property. I have a lot of clients who are under contract to purchase a new build, let's say with Mandalay Homes, or with Universal Homes at Granville, and there's no place for them to rent. There literally is no available rentals for them to find. I feel like there's a shortage of rental property. There's certainly a lack of affordability when it comes to purchasing a property. I feel like a large portion of Prescott Valley is a service-based industry, meaning you have the people working at the Walmart, people working at these different Home Depot, all these different retail stores, restaurants. I think that's the majority, you know, and then public servants, teachers, firefighters. I feel like that's the majority of our population, other than folks that are, might be retired. There's an epidemic right now of affordable housing for both resale and for rent, and I know you guys are kind of in a quandary on how to fix that, but I just think that the more affordable housing we can provide, as far as rents being, you know, somewhere in the, in the region of two thousand or below, would be advantageous, and I think that properties that do offer that will be in high demand. So I just wanted to give my two cents as a, one of the five-thousand real estate agents. So I just wanted to give my two cents as a, one of the 5,000 real estate agents in the Quad City, um, as to kind of what we are seeing, like with boots on the ground. I know there's been a lot of comments about water as well, and I know that we're in the AMA, and I know that that's governed by the state of Arizona and that that's something that you guys don't necessarily need to, um, step into, but just from my perspective of like private wells that are being tested around this area, um, there's private wells that the yield's increasing on, and there's private wells that the yield's decreasing on. So like the people that are, you know, stirring up panic saying that the, that there's no more water, that's not necessarily accurate. Um, there's a lot of parts of Prescott Valley where the, where the yields are increasing, uh, when you test a well. So I just wanted to make that comment as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. One more last call. If there's no additional comments, I'm gonna close the floor and bring it back to the commission. And, uh, the first question that I'd like to ask Mr. Ballmer and Emmy Fernando, if that's important, I know that we have, uh, another meeting, um, on the ninth, a scheduled meeting, but with the information that, from the feedback from the community this evening, and also, um, since, um, we were handed, I'm gonna say Isabel's rather than trying to pronounce your last name because I would blow it, um, for us to really get a chance to look through this and give our comments, uh, along with this, uh, to the council, uh, if we approve moving this forward, which I believe that we should, um, at what point do you need any comments that, um, this commission would have on what was spoken tonight and also what was in the, the five-page from Isabel? When would we need to have those to you so that, um, the council has that feedback?
Thank you. Well, first, um, the material that you have tonight, uh, is something we all do need to look at. It's, I think it's important, and I'm thankful for the time to put together the document that we have. There are two options to that. One is, you can look at it and move it forward to the council, since, as she mentioned, several of these are really council items for consideration. You could look at it this evening and send us your comments after this meeting. Be glad to get whatever comments you have on them, and then we can pass those on to the council as well. The other is, you could continue it for the next meeting, however, then we're going to be really tight on a timeframe because the town clerk wants to have all of the revised material in her possession by May 2nd, and that includes getting them printed and all prior to doing that. So you have two, two options there, but my recommendation would be, take some time to look at them after this meeting, send me your comments, or send them on to the, the town council, they're the ones who will be looking at it, and if they want to continue it or ask us to include some additional material from hers or other comments you heard this evening, we'd be glad to do it.
And hopefully that, um, uh, these comments, uh, would be sent on to the individuals on the council also, so that they can review.
Yes, this will be forwarded, no matter what happens, it will be forwarded to the council as part of the material this evening.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, um, from the commission?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Just out of curiosity from all the wonderful community citizens here tonight, how many of you took this survey? Wow. It's online. It wasn't a document that was sent out, I don't believe. It was all online. But anyway, thank you to all of you that did. That's pretty overwhelming. Um, I just want to make a few comments. Totally agree with the comments this evening about affordable housing. I would like to have more conversation about that in our general plan, Mr. Ballmer. I do feel that we are weak in that area. Um, we owe it to our citizens, our, and our community to see what we can't do. I want to also say thank you to Elizabeth, Isabel, and I will not attempt your last name either. You did make some good valuable suggestions. A couple of them I had already highlighted in my general plan. And please understand that quite a few of your items are not under our purview, but, um, nonetheless, I appreciate your hard work, and I do want to thank all of you for being here tonight. It means a lot, and it's heartwarming when we see the citizens come to our meetings. Sometimes I don't feel the love, but tonight, tonight I feel the love, so thank you for all being here. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Vice Chair? Okay. I'm gonna go off that great tagline. I feel the love too. Thank you all so much for coming out. I am a huge community activist. I'm doing what I can here to help, you know, this town the best that we can, and to see each and every one of you in these seats just fires me up. So, very much appreciated. Isabel, is that a say this? Did I do it right? Did I do okay? I'll try, I'll try. Um, thank you very much for your comments, um, your attention to detail and, um, just keen eye and public action, I think is very, very, very important. I very much respect that. I think that shows great leadership, so thank you so much. That's for me, just, you know, part of my own personal paradigm is to, to, to do the diligence that you need to do, and it is very clear that you did that here, so, um, keep doing that, I encourage you to keep doing that. Um, as mentioned, for me and for my liking, this, having this at, with such, such short notice, does not give, um, it the credibility and the due diligence that it deserves. I did, uh, read through it briefly, and there are some things in here that, um, as mentioned, are not under our purview, um, and they are with very, uh, with spec- specificity and they're carved out, so it might not, the plan itself might not be the place for it, but I do think that all of it needs to be taken into consideration. You mentioned town versus city. I found that to be, um, interesting. The HOA point, I think, was great. Um, I noticed some other here about inclusion and diversity. That's huge for me. Um, I would like to see, um, the inclusion and diversity specifically with adding a couple of, um, additional pictures to the general plan of people of color. I think that's huge. Also, there are some other notes I mentioned here, maybe, uh, looking into changing the word handicap to disability. I think that's another good one. So, um, very, very strong comments. Thank you all, um, who had the courage to come in and speak tonight and come to the podium and, and put your ideas, um, into action and let us hear them. It's very helpful. I, I would like to again reiterate that the purpose of the plan is, you know, forward-looking, and it's to be general, and so a lot of times I believe that it might be a little bit of a misconception that this plan is the say-all, be-all, but there are other avenues for those lines of action, and, um, I think with this group together here tonight, we can work together to get all of, um, your, your comments, um, taken into consideration in front of the right people. But I just wanted to generally, um, and broadly, thank you all so much. I feel the love. Please keep coming out, please keep, uh, having your voice heard, please keep keeping those, you know, people accountable. I think it's, it's very important.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I want to thank each one of you who came out, who familiarized yourself with the plan and care enough about your community to show up and give your opinion. Being involved is what makes Prescott Valley the place that it is. And I also want to thank Mr. Ballmer for the amount of work and the collection of input from all of the various departments and for coordinating this thing. It was a huge project and is continuing to be, and stay involved with your town.
Thank you, Ernie. At this point, staff recommends the commission approve the proposed town of Prescott Valley general plan. Did you need to speak?
Mr. Vice Chair, with your indulgence, uh, I'd like to respond to some of the comments that the citizens made this evening.
Oh, okay, that's fine, go right ahead.
Okay. Well, first, with regard to the land use changes that, that you heard Mr. Bull and the others speak about, the coun- the council's thought was that it's really a two-part process. The general plan says what it can be used for, the zoning says how specifically it will be used. The concern was, with some of the new goals that we're proposing, it might look different than it would have a year ago. And the council's very concerned about citizen participation, as you've heard this evening, and they didn't want to give the impression to residents or, or whatever, that the council's already prejudged something by saying it's going to be commercial, and now we're just talking about the site plan, as opposed to, should it be commercial at all? So the direction we had was, don't change anything, but focus more on the policies, what it should look like when it's built, and then when it comes forward, the council can look at the general plan amendment and the zoning at the same time. So that, that's why we did that. Uh, second is, the, the comment about what happens to it after it's adopted. Actually, it's adopted by the council, and it's kept by the council, and then they work with the administration and set priorities as what they would like the administration to work on. Uh, for instance, open spales, open space and trails was mentioned. One of the things the town would like to do is buy land from the state of Arizona to do the Alba Fria Park up on the north side, and also to expand Glassford Hill on the west side. Now, if you can do those two things and you can link them with trails, now you've got a trail system with two destinations that would be very attractive to people. You know, if you think of the, the valley, you've got Camelback Mountain and some other really distinctive areas, we could have that with Glassford Hill. But that's a priority the council needs to set and decide what they want to do with their, with their resources. And that's the other goals as well. There's probably more goals in there than reasonably can be accomplished. But the council needs to set priorities, I mean, just as they do as a council, and this will help guide them as to what their priorities as they get together should be, what would they like to accomplish? So some of these things won't probably be accomplished, but some of them might be accomplished, some of them halfway, some of them, you know, are going to be ten years from now rather than now because the situation doesn't, uh, cover it at the moment. The issue about water is, is a reoccurring theme, and, and in the valley, you know, we have the Central Arizona Project and the rivers and all, but here you don't have that. So actually, probably everybody who used water here today contributed to the overdraft because we're all taking out water. And the town is in a unique situation in that, that, as you know, the town was platted, almost all of the lots were platted at roughly the same time, and there are still homes to be built in there. Many of those homes got a certificate from the Arizona Department of Water Resources saying they are guaranteed to have water, and the town has to honor those, and if they don't, they would be in big legal trouble because people are expecting them to do that. So the town has to provide water, and they have to provide a hundred-year supply of water. And so that's what the town is working on. What do we have? What can we recharge from our wastewater reclamation plan, and where can we get new resources? And we've tried to touch on all of those in the report. And some of them may not be done in ten years, they may be twenty years, or some of them may not be done at all because other alternatives come forward. But the town is very concerned about sustainability and water, but then if we talk about sustainability and some of the other issues we've talked about tonight, additional housing and sustainability, how do those two work together? That's something the council would have to balance. And, um, let's see, what else do we have? The, oh, um, the water security policy and, and, uh, the whole idea of, of random growth and easy zoning. The town actually takes that seriously. As you heard this evening, that's probably not gonna be an easy zoning case, but the council wants to know what the residents think and how will it affect the neighborhood around it. And yes, we did look at other communities, uh, but Boulder is a unique physical environment, political environment, social environment, that isn't easily replicated in our area because, so, and, and they also have different, different, if you think about affordable housing and think about Boulder, uh, we are affordable housing for Boulder. So, so, but that's, that that's the challenge, is affordable for one community is not affordable in another. And unfortunately, a home costs a certain amount to build, and if you, if the home is affordable for this person, how do you cap that so when they sell it, they, they receive a lot of money because they had an affordable house that they acquired, but now they sell it and it's not affordable anymore? Um, many communities wind up having to do that with, with public housing. Essentially, it's a rental, and you cap the income of the person, basically, to say, these are the people we're helping, and then you give them a house to live in and you rent it. That's what we did in Scottsdale, and we did it in Mesa. Mesa has about a thousand assisted housing certificates, but it's 500,000 people. I did some checking here, and there are eighty certificates in Yavapai County for lower-income families to get assistance on housing. Otherwise, it's all private market rate, and we've seen what's happened to the market in recent years. So I think, I've tried to touch on anything. If there's any other question that, that you have this evening, um, I'll be glad to try and answer it now if you'd like.
Commissioner Griffith?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Mr. Ballmer, when you made a, you just made a statement that you've seen assisted housing certificates elsewhere. Do they affect a community on a positive note?
Well, it, it depends.
It depends, I think.
Yes. It, if, if a community like Mesa, Mesa's new, but it was, been there for a hundred years, and it has kind of the downtown area that was a pretty substantial city of sixty or seventy thousand at the time, but now the housing is older, and the people who live there can't afford a new house necessarily, or even buy a house where they are. So if you don't want people to be on your streets or having problems or doubling up in homes and, and other things that people do kind of in extreme circumstances for housing, you need to try and provide an alternative. But when Mesa was looking at, how do you build a house? We worked with Habitat for Humanity to build houses, but you can only build so many houses a year. We thought if we could do fifteen a year, that would be great, but the waiting list was probably two hundred. So how do you get enough homes to match that? And the answer is, you never do.
You don't.
So, yeah, you try to help those that you can, who are in the most severe situations, and, and figure that's what we can do. Um, the other thing is, you can apply to the federal government. They have programs to assist people with lower interest loans, low-cost housing, that sort of thing. But again, it's very competitive, and, uh, it's not available really to everybody who would like to have it. But I don't think there's a city in the United States that solved the affordable housing problem because affordable is a real moving target.
Thank you, sir.
Vice Chair? I have another one.
Commissioner McCain?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Uh, Mr. Ballmer, this is, this is for you, if I can. So it came up a couple of times this evening about the idea of accountability and what this general plan, um, means and, and what accountability people who are, are, and should be implementing these, these plans have. Um, I know with respect to my job, I'm very much held accountable, so, um, I think the feeling is, uh, mutual that we want people to be accountable, right? So, um, can you please, is it a correct statement that when this plan was written, that we did get contribution from many different departments within the town to contribute to this language and verbiage within this document? So for example, CAFMA, right? We have a serious situation going with the ambulances, we're trying to work through that, but CAFMA has had the opportunity to look through this and provide comment for this and has helped provide information for this, such as their goals. Is that a correct statement?
Oh, that's correct, yes.
Okay, awesome. So I just wanted to be clear that the departments who have helped put this together, have read it, have contributed to it, and I think that also will help with accountability because if they're helping implement a plan as this, then they are, you know, aware of what's in it and therefore have a duty to hold themselves accountable to it.
Yes, and, and that's actually a very good point about this plan versus others that Mr. Bull and I may have worked on. This is really more of a homegrown plan. If you'd hired a consultant, you know, they would come in, they would have two or three meetings, they have probably stocked seventy percent of information in their office, they add your thirty percent on, and they give it to you and say, here's your new plan. We didn't do that at all. We, we talked to every department and said, you're going to be exactly the responsible person for Parks and Recreation, or Public Works, or... for Parks and Recreation or Public Works or Water or whatever it is. We want your information to put it into the plan so that we know, we're saying and we're telling people what the town can do or should do. And then we add those goals to say, these are all the goals, and the staff can accomplish them generally, but that's where the council comes into it, to say, what priorities do they want to set for the next two years or five years or 10 years? So, out of all of those things, the town doesn't have enough money to implement all of those things, and some of them would be very time-consuming to do, but the council can pick them and say, what should a citizen do to hold people accountable? You could look at the plan and say, these to me are the top five things the town should be working on, just like the survey that we did, and then talk to your council member and say, these are the five I think you and the council ought to be working on, and work with the council, work with your neighbors, work with others to try to get your five things adopted. And you'll see from our survey, there were lots of things that people either liked or wanted to change, so how do you focus in? How do you narrow in on what you can actually do?
Are there any other questions, Mr. Ballmer?
Thank you.
On our time restraint, in other words, the moving forward of this project to the town council for their approval to get it on the ballot so that in November, we all can vote on it, that's the time restraint that we're under currently. So, I'm going to recommend, and staff recommends the commission approve the proposed Town of Prescott Valley General Plan 2035, and recommend to the town council proceed with the remaining portion of the general update process. I'm hoping that we have a motion to do that. Well, I'm going to make the motion that we approve the proposed Town of Prescott Valley General Plan 2035 and recommend to the town council to proceed with the remaining portion of the general plan. Now, one thing that we, I think all of us would like to add some notes to be passed on to Mr. Ballmer about this evening's discussion. I wish you all had been here at our meeting two weeks ago, but now we're in a situation, so I'm looking for a second to my motion.
Mr. Vice Chair, I will make the second with the caveat that it is critically important, Mr. Ballmer, that's our comments that you heard this evening, and even more importantly, the comments that we heard from our community tonight and Ms. Isabel's comments, that we do take those and move them forward in your written format going to council for their interpretation and understanding.
And since we have a second, do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
One note in closing from Ms. Griffith is we're taking the minutes here tonight, and that's why they'd asked everyone clearly to spell their name, so their names and their comments will be forwarded on to the council as the minutes for the meeting along with the other material that you received.
And I have used my last pack of yellow highlighters on this book tonight. I have no more yellow highlighters left.
I can get you another one. Or we can actually get you another one if you swing by the town. We'll give you one.
Thank you.
I'm definitely outnumbered here.
Mr. Vice Chairman?
The next?
I am assuming that our forwarding this plan is subject to minor editing.
Yes. Mr. Ballmer?
I think that's implicit in our recommendation.
The next item is a call to the public. Consideration and discussion of comments from the public. Those wishing to address the plan in the zoning commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for future consideration and decision at a later date. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
I would just like to request, Isabel Seda-Sedes, 13-year resident. I would just like to request that any edits that are made to the plan as it exists now, that there be a mechanism for us to be able to see what has actually been changed so we don't have to go back through the plan and kind of look for changes. Thank you.
Thank you. If nobody has any more comment, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I'll make a motion to adjourn our Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
All second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.